I'd like to call this meeting a Shadron City Council order. Would you please join us in the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection A of the Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Openshooting Meeting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the City Council chambers. Before we have a roll call, I'd like to welcome the guests to tonight's meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
George Klein?
Here.
Shane Shepherd?
Here.
Mark Graves?
Here.
Kevin Alexi?
Here.
Clay Anderson?
Here.
Could we have a motion for approval of the agenda? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark, to approve the agenda. Could we have a roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Clay, seconded by Shane, to approve the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of amendment of the minutes from the city council meeting of January twentieth to include the second motion and a roll call vote to approve the claims. That was inadvertently not put in the minutes of first edition of the minutes. Minutes from the city council meeting from February third of 2025. There is a letter, brownfield letter regarding the projects Arizona Associates have been working on in Shadron. Minutes from the community development, citizen advisory committee are attached. And the water report from the month of January. Fire department membership update. The end of January, they had forty-three active members. Special designated licenses that were administratively approved. Nights at Columbus Dinner and Auction Fundraiser for St. Patrick Catholic Church at the Assumption Arena to be held March first. The Ridge for Boss's Night at the Shadron Volunteer Fire Department on this coming Saturday, February twenty-second. And the Ridge for Black Tie Calf Riot's Dodge County Fairgrounds on March first. Could we have a roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
On the agenda, Deb Cotier? Northwest Nebraska Eagleman Corporation?
Good evening, council members. Deb Cotier, four-two-eight North Shadron Avenue. You have a very short, brief report in front of you that would have been in your packets. Two things I wanted to add to that report. First of all, as your representative to the Panhandle Area Development District Board, we held a meeting in Gering last week and one of the items that was handed around or sent around was progress being made on the very confusing and long-drawn-out process of determining if all the communities or counties in the state of Nebraska are served adequately by internet infrastructure. There's an acronym called BEED, which is, I guess, the federal funding that comes to the state. But there is also a project that the development district is involved in, and that is to help communities determine if, in fact, you are in what they consider an underserved or non-served region. And she had a big map that had some of that stuff laid out on it. And that they could help you with community input sessions to try to figure out what would be the best plan moving forward. It's in conjunction with this BEED funds that come through the state, but it is a separate USDA rural development grant, I believe. The PAD and the rest of the development districts across the state are working under. Really difficult to understand sorts of activities as well as how this truly affects us. And I mentioned that I thought perhaps a session just to tell people what this is all about might be worthwhile. And I found it a less than satisfactory description and explanation of what it is that they're doing. So I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think many of the community, people in the community are aware that there is this technical assistance at least available. Particularly if you live on the fringe area and you're not being served, in your opinion, or you can prove adequately with whatever the magic number is for up and down speed on internet broadband speed. Something you might want to look into. The other thing that they mentioned was they're looking at potentially holding, and Janet may have knowledge about this, a zoning, a planning and zoning meeting, which could actually be, in some way, of interest to new council members. They're going to do some things that I believe are really critical for your appointed commissions, like the planning commission, obviously some of the staff people. But not just the city, but the county as well. Anyway, they've had these in the past for the whole Panhandle, and it's a day-long session. The young man who's really helped put all those together, former employee from the development district, is now in eastern Nebraska, and so they're left a little bit wondering how they're going to pull all this together. But Amy Sapp and the planner from the city of Gering were both really adamant about having this sort of session again, because everybody in the room seemed to think it was really good for particularly small communities that don't have a great deal of staff, that you could send volunteer commission and board members to. So that may be coming up. Just wanted to put that on your radar, that those are two things that PAT is involved with that aren't like everyday reasons for Shadron to know what they're doing. But it could impact and could be helpful to you guys to know that those projects are moving forward. And the other thing I was going to mention is activities that the Heartland Expressway Association Board has been involved in here recently. And they both have to do with legislation at the state level. We were notified late, a week ago now already. It'd be a week ago last Friday, about a bill that would completely change how state-generated revenue for road construction and maintenance is distributed. Right now, it's, it all comes into Lincoln and the Nebraska Department of Transportation with input from their eight district directors from across the state, determine what, where the need is, what needs to be done first, what the priorities are, all based on a couple of different criteria that they think are the most critical. This bill that's been introduced by a gentleman, brand-new state senator from Omaha, would essentially say seventy percent of the money collected from each district needs to stay in that district. So Douglas County, Lancaster County, Sarpy County, they're all pretty much in district one and two of the highway commissions, highway, excuse me, highway districts. They would retain all of, seventy percent of what's generated in their county, they would get to spend in their county or their district. The director of the Department of Transportation testified in opposition to that because it is counter to everything that they currently have in their policies and regulations on how they manage this process. Most of the folks who testified were in opposition to it, basically saying, you know, those areas that have a great number of miles and a few number of people and not a lot of places that are generating field tax should not suffer for the fact that they don't collect as much as Omaha or Lincoln does. So we sent letters of opposition, as well, the Heartland Expressway Board members individually did, as well as we sent one from the whole group. Then the other thing I might mention that probably doesn't have much of a chance of seeing, probably even getting out of committee, but the chairman of the committee, his name is Mike Moser, he has introduced a bill that would increase what we refer to as the Build Nebraska Act funding, which is currently a quarter of one cent of the state sales tax is earmarked and dedicated to building highways. And of that priority is expressways. That's been in place, I think, like eighteen years, something like that. Then state Senator Deb Fisher is the woman who shepherded that through the process. Anyway, she originally had asked for a half cent, and they cut it back to a quarter of a cent. Moser wants to take it to the full half cent. So in other words, he wants to double what's available in DOT for what we refer to as the Build Nebraska Act. A lot of those funds have been used in the Heartland Expressway. There are very few funds within the Nebraska legislature that are not federally generated that they can use for new construction. And that's the tough part, that expensive building new highways, or in our case, building two lanes beside the existing two lanes for a four-lane highway. We will, more than likely, we have a meeting Thursday, but we'll more than likely go on record in favor of that bill from the Heartland Expressway Board. But it's not even scheduled for a hearing yet. It's in the Revenue Committee, which of course is the group that decides where the, how much revenue can go to each, each project or idea that comes to the Appropriations Committee. So without another way to replace that, you literally have to take it from someone else's budget in order to double that. That's a tough sell this year when the governor's main goal is lowering the cost of state government. So I don't know it'll go anywhere, but I wanted you to be aware of that as well. And the final thing is that group, Heartland Expressway Board, three of us from that board, will be going to Washington the last week of March, and I think I've mentioned that before. And that's our opportunity then to speak with the federal delegation, which is not any more clear than what's going to happen at the state level as it relates to dollars available. But the maintaining that relationship and continuing to put our information in front of them is important, and so we'll continue to do that. That's all I have for a report. Unless you have any questions?
So Deb, on the first item that you're concerned about, that reapportioning to that seventy percent, where is that in the process? Is it going to die on the vine?
It is in committee. That was a, a public hearing was held on Monday, I think, a week ago Monday. There was not a tremendous amount of positive testimony. I listened to it online. It won't come out of there just the way it's written. I know that. But the gentleman who introduced the bill was there, of course, and he told the director to her face right there at the hearing that they are certainly willing to discuss ways that they could maybe change it. Director Kramer told me on the phone that Friday that they, they kind of knew this was, somebody was talking about doing this, and they didn't really know how much support was there or who might be in favor of this until very close to when the hearing was held. So I don't believe she thinks it's going to pass as is. But, you know, in this era of changing everything and combining things and centralizing things and figuring out different ways to distribute things to supposedly make them more efficient, your guess is as good as mine, George. I really, we have to stay vigilant. We have to keep, keep on top of it. But it first has to come out of committee, and they did not vote it out that day. They just took all, all the testimony that day, so. Well, I'm sure that the director will let us know if it does get out of committee and if she wants to sort of rally the troops to, to continue to talk. The one benefit is that our state senator is on that committee, and she spoke pretty clearly in opposition to this wholesale change of how we distribute road funding. It'd be a huge, huge lift to try to do that when you have projects in the works and you've got, you know, long-term, six-year at least plans out there. How you, how you change that and still make it equitable at this point, I don't know. But I, I wouldn't want to predict. It's not one of those where you think it, you know, doesn't have a prayer. I think it does, and so we have to, we have to stay on top of it.
Any other questions for Deb? Very good. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Deb.
Next item on the agenda is appoint a couple individuals to the Citizen Advisory Review Committee Economic Development Plan.
I'll make that motion to appoint Ben and Carrie, Ben Rust and Carrie Bailey, to the Citizen Advisory Review Committee.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin, to appoint Ben Rust and Carrie Bailey to the Citizen Advisory Review Committee in the Economic Development Plan. Are there any questions? Well, after this, there will be one vacancy open on that committee before you go ahead and approve it, so. No questions? Could we have a roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Okay, item D, annual library report from Rosella.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good evening. I am Rosella Dash, library director, and I'm here to report on the annual report of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Okay, so we'll start with activities and programs. Those are just the main programs, like, for example, the winter reading program for grownups. It's full of programs every Saturday for the adults. The summer reading program, same thing in summer. From May to the end of July, we offer programs every, almost every day of the weeks to different age groups. Storytime, storytime goes on almost every month. We have May and January, we take a little break, but it's four times a month. Teen Advisory Board, yoga, it was twice a week and sometime also on Saturdays. We had the volunteer award and reception in October, and we celebrated Margaret V. Miller. We offer movies for children very often on Fridays afternoon with popcorn and the kids going up and down extremely excited. Steam and STEM activities. And of course, we have Maker Space Crafts. We did a program, was called Colorful Leaves. It was in two or three sections. We use autumn leaves to create art. Then we had Art for the Aging. It was a grant, and so we were able to bring art instructors to Crestview and also to the Citizen Center for four sessions. Of course, we have the traditional holiday open house and Valentine's Day party every year. We do rest home visits. We had three authors coming during the fiscal year. Paul Valentine, Mercy Broihill, she is a lady that writes poetry about this part of the country and the story, the Caboey, Caboey cultures. And then Doctor McConkey, he had an inspirational book. Of course, we have a book club every third Saturday of each month. It has grown through the years, and now we have twelve members usually participating. We had a yard sale on the lawn and a magical show. We try to bring a musician every year. So those were the main activities. So our services, we provide technology training. So if people come to us and say, I don't know how to use the internet, I don't know how to set up an email account, things like that, I don't know how to use Excel. We sit, we sit down with them individually. We have discovered that the setting of the library is not conducive to classes because we really don't have space for classes, so we do by individual. We do lots of photocopies, believe it or not. Reference questions, and you will see the number we do. People call and ask all kinds of questions from, can you give me the, the information about the best restaurant in Shadron? Or can you tell me information about this bird? Very, very, very broad thing. We provide tax forms. I would like to say we don't provide tax advice, absolutely, but if people need us to print forms, we do for them. We help people with applications. Lots of people that come to us, they don't know how to apply online for a job. So we sit down again individually, and we try to help them to do those applications. Reading advisories, people come to us asking about what I can read, what movies I can rent, and we try to help them. Interlibrary loans, we procure books that we don't have at the library, contacting other libraries. We have a capacity to search the libraries all over and around the world. Once I had to do an interlibrary loan for a lady bringing a book from Inglewood, so. And of course, also there are people that ask us to do research on different subjects, and we try to do that, too. So the grants of this year, we had the Art for the Aging Grant, it was three thousand nine hundred dollars. It included the honorarium of an artist that was coming from Scotts Bluff. It came four times. And also all the equipment for the people to paint. And the grant was coming from Nebraska Art Council. Shovel Ready Grant, six hundred forty thousand from the DED. And traveling storyteller, one thousand dollars. So some of the statistics of what we have done this year, I mean, the year twenty-three, twenty-four. The number of visits to the library were seventy-four thousand two hundred and four. We offered two hundred forty-seven programs. We had three thousand three hundred thirty-five cardholders, and that should not surprise you because beside the citizens of Shadron, we provide for the college students and also for the people in the communities along Highway twenties. We also do some temporary cards for people that come to work, like in Pine Ridge, for six months and stuff like that. We do those cards. Number of reference questions, the questions I was telling you about, two thousand four hundred thirty-three. So of course, technology is one of the important offerings of the library. We have fifteen computers dedicated to the public. So eight are upstairs for the adults. The other ones are downstairs for the kids. We have one scanner, very much used. Every day that scanner is being used. Photocopies, one, printers, two. We have a fax machine that is really well-used, too. People come even from Pine Ridge to have us making faxes. I know sometime people think it's an old technology, but in this part of the country, it's very much used still. Of course, we also offer Wi-Fi. So when the library is closed, people can park on the, up close to the curb and still access the Wi-Fi. That is a very good thing for tourists, for people that have some urgent business during the weekend. Of course, we have a beautiful Maker Space, and I invite all of you to come and see it, see it in action. And, oh, already put the fax machine twice. It's very much used, so. So some of statistics of that use. We had two thousand adults, two thousand five hundred twenty-six uses for the year. For the kids, one thousand two hundred thirteen. The Maker Space was used two hundred seventy-one times. And Wi-Fi, six hundred fifty, but that is only what we can spot. We don't know at night, or we don't know on Sunday, you know, how much use we have. Probably it's way more than that. So collections, we have twenty-two different collections. They span from adult fiction to magazines, to nonfiction, to children fiction, nonfiction. We have a beautiful Indigenous people of North America collection that has very interesting books. We have a great movie collection. So we have documentaries, we have feature movies and series, and so on and so forth. So the number of all items in those collections for this year was thirty-three thousand and eighty. The number of materials we discarded was three thousand five hundred sixty-two. Number of physical material added, two thousand and six. Number of eBooks and audiobooks databases, three. We offer to the public Libby, Hoopla, and for the little ones, Tumble, TumbleWits. And if somebody home hear me, TumbleWits, it's an amazing, amazing database for kids. You can enter, and you can teach your kids Spanish, English, French. And also there are lots of little documentaries from National Geographic and lots of audiobooks that you can use. And of course, Libby and Hoopla don't need too much explanation because they are very big favorites. All right? Okay, so let's see how much all this stuff had been used. So for the adult books, audiobooks and videos collection, we had fifteen thousand five hundred forty-one checkouts. For the kids' material, we had five, seven thousand six hundred fifty-four. Other items, and those are, we have backpacks for family explorations. Each backpack has different items inside. Some have binoculars, some have the equipment to do a little bit of coding. So those were checked out one hundred forty-five times. And then the Libby, Tumble Book, Hoopla, were checked out twelve thousand seven hundred twenty-six, for a total of thirty-six thousand and sixty-six items. So what's new at the library? Many things new. Thanks to the DED grant, it was six hundred forty thousand, six, six hundred forty, fifty-four dollars. And because it was a voucher grant, so the Shadron Public Library Foundation added six hundred forty thousand fifty-four dollars for a grant sum of a million to a hundred eighty, one hundred eight dollars. So what we did with those money, we have demolished the five hundred nineteen Board Street. Um, building was called the Annex. We demolished the fences, the sidewalks and the garage. Then we put a new roof for the library and the photo, it's from the new roof. The new roof, it's amazing, it has thirty-five years warranty and is already making a huge difference. Although we still have to do the windows and the door, the, the library is way, way warmer. Way, way warmer. So what we are doing right now, uh, we are working on having new windows for the west and the north side of the library. And also a new escape, fire escape on the west side. So that is what is going, it's, all the windows have to be custom-made because, so it is taking a little bit, but we're getting there. And also we're going to, after that, to start tucking point for the, the outside of the library. And the people that do all that stuff are Assistant Director Carl Speaker, then Youth Services Manager Joseph M. Roska, Library Assistant Renee Red Fern, Part-Time Assistant Sharon Turle, and Part-Time Library Assistant Jamie Goffin. And that is the end of my presentation. And if you have questions, I will be happy to answer.
I just want to say how, I'm always impressed of how much usage the library gets. I think people just think it's a little, a little bright library that's just sitting there by itself. But the amount of uh, people that come through there on a daily basis, it's, and the numbers show that. It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, and it's fun, and it's fun to help people, to welcome them. Thank you.
I noticed the numbers for circulation between the physical materials and the electronic are getting pretty close to each other. Is that a, a trend that you notice? Is, is more electronic being utilized or?
Um, no, it's still more books, uh, slightly. I think they will level at a certain point because of the people that use more the books don't like the electronic and vice versa. So in reality, it's like there are two libraries. There is the physical library and the electronic online library. And we're trying to cultivate both because in this community, both are really used and appreciated. But it's exciting.
That is exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't going to mention this, but I had a client in the other day and she told me that she looked at Emily's book, Waiting for Baby Jesus at the library. I was really surprised that you had ordered it. Or maybe you came down to the book signing and bought a copy. I don't know.
No, I don't know because I don't have, I mean, I don't do the purchasing directly anymore. I am more a paper pusher, unfortunately. I will have a talk with the children's librarian and let you know.
Okay, but it must be there. This lady says she saw it there.
I, if she saw it, then yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like I said, I am more, you know, paperwork, paperwork. So, but yeah.
I got a question. On some of these improvements to the building, is that going to be on the side? That's gonna, the addition will be?
No, no. That side, in fact, I haven't talked about the sou- south side. No, it's uh, going to stay.
As is?
As is until we have more of the project defined.
Like a defined plan and everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One thing I have to say, it's whatever we do outside is done with consciential, is done carefully because the library building, it's an historic.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Rosella? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item E.
I'll introduce Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kevin, second by Clay. Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten, to approve the application of the Shadrin Public Library Foundation for community development funds to be used as a match for private funds being solicited to renovate the existing Carnegie Building, building and to build an additional five thousand square feet of space on the south side of the existing space. Do we have a presentation by anyone or?
I'm Susie Jones, President of the Shadrin Public Library Foundation. And um, as you saw, we have received a lovely grant from the state of Nebraska. And uh, we are using that specifically for the Carnegie building. But we were at the point now where we need to upgrade the, we've had preliminary uh, schema, architectural information gathered. Uh, and now it's time to upgrade it because we have changed the plan uh, from what it was first proposed at. We've had to downsize it. And so now we need, this funding will help us uh, purchase the schematic, start on the schematic drawings and update with the architects and that kind of thing. So we can have a better idea of the actual costs of the things for the new addition. And so that helps us in our fundraising because that's a lot of what they want to see. We have an overall four million dollar budget at this point in time, but by the time we get the money raised, it may be more than that. So that's why it's important to have these architectural updates and that kind of thing. So that's what we applied for this grant funding for. And so.
You said you downsized? What, like what?
When they first talked about it, it was sixteen thousand square feet and two stories. Well, that's been back in two thousand and fourteen. So uh, needless to say, the city has uh, said that that, they can't possibly manage that large a, a building. Uh, they would like to be able to not have to add additional staff to it. And uh, Rosella's done a beautiful job of figuring out uh, a lot, a lot of good ways to be able to have this addition and still manage with the staff she has. And then with the improvements in the uh, the Carnegie building, we will be able to manage when nobody's using the youth and the, and the children's library. We can close that area off and the adult section would be open, uh, longer hours and that kind of thing. So uh, you could manage with two staff in there, having lower bookcases. Uh, if you've been in the library, you know, you can see, you can't see through the books. You can't see uh, over the tops of the bookshelves and things like that. So those are some of the things we want to add to the new space that would have. You'd be able to, a librarian would be able to set at a central location and be able to view the maker's space and the computer's space. And, and so, you know, she's put a lot of thought into the arrangements of the things. And again, the architectural and designers will also add uh, information for us that will help us utilize that. But the five thousand square feet will double the size of the current library.
That's what I was going to ask.
And it'll be on one level. It will be uh, you know, walk-in entrance, which is desperately needed because there's, there's a lot of folks that can't use our library because they can't get in and out of it. And so that, that would be a great advantage for us. And we have the lots, the foundation had the lot. And so then we uh, beaded it back to you folks. So uh, the lot's ready and, you know, there'll be some, right now, it's been handy. Like you saw with the uh, the roofers, they could pull in on that lot and lift their stuff up on top. And we'll still have more construction going on that it will be able to utilize the lot until we can actually start building on the lot. But we've, we've got a ways to go on, on the money. We've had some wonderful donations and people are supporting us for a three to five-year period for the most part. And so we're still gathering pledges and working on grants to go forward with this project. So it's been in the works for a long time and we're determined we're going to go. So we hope you will.
So that brings the total about ten thousand square feet of, of space for the library.
Yeah, with the additions on, yeah. Yeah, and you know, there'll be better parking. That'll be another advantage too.
Was that just going to be farther south?
Yes, right. And when you ask about the windows, uh, because it's a historic building, until we have a good idea, we, we have to get information from the historical society on what we can do to add on to that building, which they've done some preliminary work on that. And so we know, and so that's why we're not going to change any of the windows on the south at this time because that building may, will be attached on the south at some point, so. Uh, but again, all has to be according to the historic guidelines. Yeah, yeah.
Excited for it.
But the community has said time and time again, they want us to keep it in that location and they want us to maintain that Carnegie library. So we're very lucky that for the most part, it's in good shape. And by the time we invest this money in, it'll be in better shape to, and be able to sustain the addition on there, so.
Well, I looked into uh, the styles of libraries nowadays aren't what I think of with, you know, bookshelves and, I mean, I remember still using microfiche in college. That, I, I, the way I understand, people need more space.
Yes.
For the library stuff and.
Yep, you need bigger tables and, and you, if you've been to some of our speakers and whatnot, we, we desperately need more space to be able to have more people come there. And like Rosella was saying, we could have computer classes, but the way the library is set up right now, forty people in the main part of the library is, and forty people downstairs in what we call our meeting room now in the children's section is your elbow to elbow. And uh, I know there's more people in the community who would attend those things if they had a little more room. And that's the, that's the thing, that the plan with the five thousand square feet would be a larger space that we could utilize and we could turn the meeting space into the lower level and as well as have a processing area for the librarians. Because at this point in time, uh, if you come in there, all of our librarians have piles of books on their desks right by the door. That's the only place they've got to work on them. And so, you know, when they built the buildings in a hundred years ago, they didn't plan on having storage space, nor did they expect that they were going to grow like ours does. So Mar- Rosella and her staff do a wonderful job keeping things in very usable spaces and, but again, uh, back to the handicap accessibility, you can't get a wheelchair down the rows between the books in the library. And Rosella and her staff do a wonderful job. People can call and they'll get the books for them and, and practically hand-deliver them to them, so. But for our overall use of our community, we need to be able to have the space that you can accommodate all kinds of people to come into your library. So it's, it's a very vital part of our community, so. And you can see, it's well-used, so.
Thanks, Ms. Jones.
Anyone else have any questions? And I, I just want to take this opportunity to, to explain to the public because I, sometimes I think the public forgets where, how this LB eight forty works. The major part of it is going to pay the bonds for the First Street project and the Storm Service project. Then there's a, a portion, and I should remember the percentage that goes into economic development and then a small portion that goes into community development. And that's what we're.
Yes, that's what we've applied for.
This money here.
I don't think a number's been listed, but twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. So no other questions? Could we have a real call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I think the public needs to hear those things out loud. And otherwise Mark wouldn't have anything to write about. He'd have to interview you after the meeting, which he probably does anyhow. So Julie Lawrence, City Transit Manager, report on statistics for the city transit usage.
The comparison from twenty-three to twenty-four on the transit program. So in your short, your sheet there, it shows you that we increased our ridership by three thousand three hundred and thirteen riders this year. And we, there's a, the fares show a two hundred and nine dollars increase of collection, but that's because most of the people bought passes and they have their passes that they use throughout the year. And we figured it out that actually there were six hundred and sixty-two passes between the two years that were purchased. We're doing quite well. And let's see here, twenty-three, the fares were ten thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. And in twenty-four, there were ten thousand seven sixty-one. And again, that was a smaller amount was because of the fact that they have their passes right now that they use. We have what's called a local match, which we have um, the AntCap, DHSS, the Hundred Women Who Care, um, the Oglala Tribe. Now we have the college, um, that all help with buying the passes for the people. And I'm really pleased with the college who decided to pay for the students' passes because now we're starting to see a lot of students who are using the bus system, knowing that they don't have to pay. And so, you know, they have to go to the medical or the shopping or whatnot. So it's nice to see that. I think we finally trained them to let them know there's not an Uber in town, so. I tell them to call us the Uber. On the right-hand column there, I just gave you an idea of basically where we go with riderships, the different places that we take them to. Um, as you can see, um, large of it is to the school transport, but a lot of it's to Walmart and um, for their groceries, doctor's offices. But, you know, there's different things that they, people go around to medical and so on and so forth. Um, let's see here. So the local match from twenty-three and twenty-four, we've got six thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. And what that is, it gets put towards our local match to where the city doesn't have to pay that much money because we brought that in from the fares. So it decreases for you guys paying that money for that. So that's really good. School kids, we love our school kids. And it's nice to see their faces happy that they get to go to school. And so um, we actually, in the mornings, we have thirty-three kids. In the afternoons, we have thirty-eight. Some of them try to pretend their mom and dad calling and saying they're not going to school and it's like, nice try, no, get on the bus, it's time to go. Um, or I like that they don't have a pass because mom washed it. Well, that doesn't work either. The um, of course, sicknesses are going around now, so we're telling the kids, because the parents do send their kids sick to school, that they have to wear masks, masks on the bus so the other riders and, you know, other people don't get sick on that. Um, we did four hundred ninety-three college students this last year. And we even helped out the college by doing their, um, that event they do down at the state park. When the kids come back from college, we transported kids for them. And then also the vans on Bordeaux, so the, um, some of the students can go down to the vans on Bordeaux and, and go back there. And my topic on van, my new van, which is lovely, sitting down in Lincoln, waiting for us. Hopefully, we're just kind of waiting on paperwork to get sent down there. So I haven't physically seen it, but they told me it is sitting there. So we have our van hopefully in about, maybe a week or two. We hope.
Doesn't need driven back?
We haven't gotten an invoice yet.
Well, that's true. I emailed them today.
We need the invoice before we can go to check, God forbid.
Those darned computer lines are just not working right now. But um, but as you can see, it's been very successful. I know George have a little bit hesitation on charging the people the money and the people are very receptive to it. Um, I had a call from, uh, who is that, Rushnell? They wanted to know how to start up a program because they wanted to take care of. They wanted to know how to start up a program, cause they wanted to take care of Rushville and have their own bus and run it for them. So I kinda sent them the steps one through twenty on what to do and what to say to the council and, cause right now they're contracted out with, I guess, open planes. So, and if they have any questions, are you gonna come ride the bus one day?
Is is the pass program new this year or was that also in place?
It started last year, so it's been, it started October first of twenty-three.
And do you, do you see an increase in people purchasing those passes? And you mentioned the college is utilizing them, but individuals or?
Yeah, the college doesn't, because this college will pay for the students, but, um, the parents, some of the kids got free passes from like the tribe and whatnot. But if that, those passes ran out, the parents are now buying them, so they will buy them on the bus or come down and see me. And we have them color-coded, so we know who's buying passes and why, that will give them a blue pass to know that the parent bought the pass for the kids. Or if it's a green one, that was given to them by the schools, that was donated by whichever group.
That's great.
And we have cameras in our buses, and this is cute, because the kids get on the bus and they don't use their seatbelts. And so the driver will sit there and say, I don't hear clicks, I don't see her putting the seatbelts, so they'll pull it over and just kinda hold it. Nope, bus doesn't move till it's clicked, so we're finally training them that bus moves when the seatbelt starts clicked, so. When they know we have a camera, they just go, oh. Any other questions?
Other than thanks for your, all your hard work, I know, since the transit program has started, we're, it's been in Chatter and it's gotten bigger and bigger, so it's, it's good that we have it.
I'll have to get the bus wrapped before we can use it, so we're trying to design something eye-catching that goes with Chatter, so I don't know what that'll be yet, but. Well, cause we can't use our buses until they're identified, or the van, I should say, excuse me. In fact, I forgot to tell Tom, I bought two magnets that say Chatter and Transit, so when we use the company car, we can just.
What? They're on the claims list.
Oh. Bastard.
But I I will say, I mean, Julie and her crew has done a really good job with everything that they're doing. I mean, and one of the things that Julie probably didn't explain is a lot of the things that the state's starting to acquire. The amount of paperwork that has changed and has enhanced as far as what's actually being asked, um, is is getting more and more for it. Because government wants to know where they're spending their money on a lot of these things. And Julie and her crew has done a really nice job getting things organized and and set up. Those other communities that are having issues with it is because they are having troubles getting somebody that's willing to go through all the paperwork. Uh, Valentine was one that actually reached out where their city of Valentine has decided to not pursue going forward with the transit as well. And they, uh, the Retirement Center, I believe, actually reached out to Julie and her crew to find out, you know, what they're doing, how it's, how it's been done. Because it is getting to be more and more cumbersome with all the paperwork. And and I gotta give credit to Julie and her crew for getting those things taken care of, cause it is a tremendous amount of paperwork that's being involved. And they do scrutinize every piece of paper.
I'm I'm even getting receipts turned back if they can't read it, even if it's faded a little bit, reject, might really.
Well, it'll be interesting to see with the pending new essential air service, that will increase ridership out to the airport, because we'll actually have flights.
We don't have very many flights that come into the airport. Where we go to rapid.
Yeah.
Or whether the new carrier is better.
Oh. Oh, well, what's that gonna be, what name, I'm sorry?
June, is that when it's?
June, yes, June first.
Well, we're ready for them when they fly in or fly out, so.
Do we, well, maybe that's part of your managerial report.
I do not have updates on the E A S yet. I will be very ecstatic when we hear that.
Item G.
Thanks, Julie.
On the agenda.
I will, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane for resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, which is to place a lien against Lot Two, Block One, Southwest. Second addition to the city of Chatter, Towns County, Nebraska, for unpaid services due and owing to the city for demolition services and rubble removal. Is that any background, no, that's what I call the Maple Ridge Apartments, the result of the fire. The owner of that did not have insurance, which I can't imagine, because it was a U S D A rural development finance project. Which I am very, very familiar with and one of the things they make you do is maintain insurance and if you don't have it, um, they'll buy it for you. And which I have talked after this happened, I actually talked to, on the phone, to the person, one of the people in charge of overseeing this project. And they said they have insurance now, but, um, and the, the owner, uh, which is an L L C. And I have no idea how how many members the L L C has. Told Tom that after fifteen years, U S D A Rural Development told him they didn't have not, did not have to have insurance, which is bogus. Because the, the loans are for fifty years and, um, but. So the city was faced with an I S O R, which we solved and we can assess. And it'll be an interesting thing to see if you take the time and anybody can look this up. Go look at the county treasurer's information, the last four years, I believe, are, um, in arrears. They've been paid because some investor picked it up to earn the fourteen percent interest. It'll be interesting to see if they pick this up or not, and maybe we'll get our money quicker, but, um. That's probably more information than you care to hear, but. So anyhow, the liens for, in the amount of forty-eight thousand nine hundred and six dollars and fifty-five cents. Anyone have any other questions? Kind of one of those things that maybe, maybe life doesn't go right.
The, let the public know, like, we don't make any interest off that.
No. Could we have a roll call please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Okay, item number H.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash, uh, one, two, move for its adoption.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Clay for resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, to approve the sidewalk improvement plan for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. And authorize the applications to be received, and Janet, would you like to come and explain the project?
Okay, so, um, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Janet Johnson, zoning building official. In your packets is, um, the, some of the guidelines that we have with the sidewalk improvement plan. And for the viewing audience, I'll just review a little bit of this. The guidelines that we have in place currently is that, um, we won't reimburse the homeowner up to fifty percent of materials and labor to repair. Or install a new sidewalk, a four-foot sidewalk up to fifteen hundred dollars and up to three thousand maximum for a five-foot sidewalk. And then also for curb cuts, um, five hundred dollars maximum for a curb cut. And then, um, this year, because we're starting a little earlier, um, give them a little more time to get quotes from contractors. So the applications will be accepted from March first through May thirtieth. And then hopefully, any, anybody that has, um, those applications, bring them back to the council, the second meeting in June. Uh, and then projects needs to be done by September first. And then, um, if we have a lot of applications, like the first year, we had, I think, thirteen applications. We have some criteria, scoring criteria, and those are at the bottom of that second sheet that I gave you. Um, located with a, within a designated school zone and then also on a designated safe rights to school, proximity to schools. And connectivity to existing sidewalks, that's how we score them. We haven't had to use any of that, because we've always had enough money to go in, go with the applications that we've received. But have we, if we were inundated with a bunch of applications, that's how we would score them. The first year, we did have a commit, a small committee that would help me figure this out, but we've never had so many that I couldn't do it myself.
Kind of a criteria on?
On how we would go forward with them. But like I said, we have a, an extra month of people being able to be a, pick up applications and, um, get with contractors. And hopefully this will help people. I think that last year, we didn't give people enough time to get with contractors and then we had to give them that that extra month of June to bring their applications in. So hopefully, the media will get ahold of this and get it out there to people. And and like I said, at last month, our last council meeting when we were talking about this, I've been contacted by three people. Asking if the council was going to do this again this year, and I will contact those people and let them know.
Janet, I just wanna add, if the citizens here of Chatter need to know some of the names of the contractors, they're more than welcome to call down to City Hall and talk to Janet. She can give the list out, because there's multiple contractors that have worked with the city in the past, so they know some of the specs and and requirements that we're looking for. And so they're very familiar with what we're doing here and, uh, I think Janet can give them those kind of things for the, the citizens.
And by the same token, if there's contractors out there who are interested in it, they should probably contact you to get on the list and.
I just wanna double check, we did decide that we were gonna have the contractors issue a dual invoice, okay?
Correct, that, and that's just something that when I'm actually talk to applicants, I will just tell them that.
Are there any other questions? I certainly, you know, encourage people to take advantage of it if they're, go out the front door and they find it difficult to scoop the snow off. Maybe it needs replacing.
Nothing's worse than having that shovel up next to your stomach and it hits you, when it hits that portion that's a little higher than the rest.
So, could we have a roll call please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Item number I.
I'll introduce, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen and move for its adoption.
Second that.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Shane for resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, which is to approve plans and specifications. For the construction of A D A restrooms at the downtown plaza and authorize notice to bidders. Janet, do you wanna explain?
Okay, this one.
What we received from J E O Consulting.
This one, if you'll look at the last sheet that's in, um, your packet, um, which is actually numbered C one hu, C one dash one dot zero zero. That's the site plan, showing you that this building will be in the northeast corner of the lot. And if you'll remember, um, previous conversations that we've had about this, um, the water and the sewer and the electrical are all, all into the lot and that location. There is one thing that when Tom and I were talking with, um, Jack Baker about this, actually in review of the plans last week. The manhole that's in the property right now that props up the Christmas tree, and Tom's the one that caught this, was going to be too close. If we were to build a building, a thirty-foot diameter Christmas tree. So we have to move that manhole over slightly in order to accommodate a Christmas tree. So, um, it was a, it was a good catch on Tom's part, so the sanitary sewer manhole that you see there, this isn't, isn't a sanitary sewer manhole. It's just a manhole cover, with a hole in the ground for our tree, is going to be moved over. And that's one of the things that's, um, in that drawing, that you can't read those itty-bitty words. But then the next thing that I wanna point out to you is on the drawing, this, um, labeled A two oh one, two oh one. And that was, that's the one that shows you the elevations and you'll see here, when you have, see the side elevations, you see a shed roof. And you also see, um, what looks like a pole, and that is the screen wall in front of the, um, doors going into the men's and women's restrooms. And this is just, um, screening off if you've got a, when the, when the restroom door actually opens. If there are people in there that aren't quite ready for the public to see them, that screen wall will, um, shield them just a little bit. And if people are standing in line, it also is going to be shielding things just a little bit. The other thing that this drawing depicts is the stu, the stacked stone that will be, um, applied to the outer portion of the block. That this building is going to be made out of, the back wall, the north wall, will not have the stacked stone, just the east, the west and the south walls. Then if the first, the first, um, drawing in this, one is the actual floor plan, that's A one oh one. And this shows you the toilet stalls, the, the two stalls in the women's restroom, the sink, and then in the men's, the one toilet stall, the urinal and the sink. This is a very, very, um, busy drawing and had, and the keynote legend has everything on it that, um, the contractors will need to know. It tells them about the electrical, it tells them about the floor drains, it tells them about this, the mirrors, the, that grab bars, the, the baby changing station. Everything that they need to know, that's a very, very detailed, busy drawing right there. That's the guts of the whole.
I couldn't understand it, so I enlarged it and I just gave my enlargement to Shane.
I have, I have in, I have in my office a twenty, a twenty-four by thirty-six set of drawings, which is going to be nice, because when the contractors actually, um, get their drawings. They'll be able to get them either electronically or, they'll probably get them, want them electronically, because then they'll be able to actually read things. Or they can get them on eleven by seventeen drawings, but even on eleven by seventeen, these are a little hard to read. So I have one set that's twenty-four by thirty-six back in my office.
So these will be open all year round?
They will be open all year round, um, we will have radiant heaters in both, both restrooms and also in the mechanical chaise. The wall heat is R ele, is gonna be insulated to R eleven. The, um, roof is a two-by-eight construction and it will have, um, insulation in the roof. The doors are insulated doors, so, um, we won't be keeping it to seventy-five degrees in there, but we'll be able to easily keep it to sixty-five. So, but yes, they will be heated. Um, we did take, um, Rick's advice, so we specked out doors that can be locked and programmed to be locked at a certain time of day. And unlocked at a certain time of day. to be locked at a certain time of day and unlocked at a certain time of day. The, there'll be sensors in the light switches so that when the door opens, the lights come on and so does the mechanical fan. And then when the, you leave the, the structure, the lights go off. So we're trying to make it as, um, user-friendly as possible, but also as easy to take care of and maintain as possible. So the materials that we've chosen are going to be easy to clean. The fixtures themselves are industrial fixtures, so they'll be easy to clean. Hopefully, people will like what they see and they won't vandalize it. So we're trying to make everything as vandal, vandal resistant as possible also. And hopefully, they're all ready to use by Labor Day.
Any other questions?
Well, working for the Parks Department and, uh, seeing what would happen to the bathrooms in our city parks, I hope, uh, I hope the general public will respect these a little bit, a little bit better.
Well, it's, it's hard to, um, go into something that's old and has been tried to been retrofit to today's standards. We're hoping that with the new money that we're receiving in next year's budget, we can go into the parks and at least take one restroom and either completely redo it or mothball it and bring in something new. The parks restrooms have been on my list to, to redo and be one of the top priorities with occupation tax money. That's why I pushed so hard to get that money. And I've been trying for four, between four and five years to get that money. So I, I, I've been pushing, pushing, pushing. Tom's been listening to me for over two years and before Tom, there were other people that were listening but not hearing. So hopefully, we can do something with that money.
And the, the, one of the things is, is that we're using this room, this restroom, as kind of our guideline to see how the, what we can do for changes for different things. And so this is our one that's kind of, we're looking at everything, but we're hoping to use this as a guideline for what we're doing for the other restrooms that we do need to do for Finnegan, Wilson, uh, as we get ready to do those projects.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, have a roll call, please.
Thank you.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Okay, um, item number J. Someone care to.
I'll introduce, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Clay, seconded by Mark. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, which is declare property as surplus and authorize the same to be sold or discarded. And the list is really pretty short. Nineteen ninety-seven Ford Taurus, uh, park, playground equipment in Memorial Parks, when, including fence, fencing poles and gates. And a nineteen ninety-one tractor scraper.
Clarification, George. Um, the, the tractor scraper is the payloader that we replaced earlier. And that's the old unit that we're wanting to do, so. Just so that you guys understood which one that one was. And then as far as the playground equipment and that out there, instead of us hauling that playground equipment, what we're hoping to do is to be able to put it on the auction and allow those people that are successful bidders to maybe pick that up at the location that we're tearing out to save us some time, saving some storage time and everything else too as well. And that's why we're kind of adding this in here. I know Katie and I had a little discussion about some of these things, but those are two of the biggest reasons why we wanted to make sure that we had that in there. It'll save us some time, save us some efforts on doing some things down the road.
Any other questions? We have a roll call, please.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the claims that submitted. I checked them off over the bills and noticed I didn't check my position up here. And there's a revised list and I'm trying to figure out what's, um, revised.
George, the revised list has, uh, one thing which is going to be J and J. It's a, it's a, on the new one. I don't have my revised list in front of me. This one right here. It's the, the fuel flow fees for January was inadvertently, uh, missed when we initially sent that out. And, uh, we, we caught it actually just today. And it is one of those things that we wanted to try to include on this one, but it is the full fees for January. We had some sickness going through our financial department and it was just overlooked at that time. And so we would like to just let you guys know that that's what it was.
I'll second that motion, George.
Okay. Anyone have any question? Motion by me and seconded by Shane. I did notice, um, that we purchased a hundred and fifty signs at thirty-two dollars a pop. Plus the shipping for that five thousand eight dollars. I assume these are street signs that are no longer readable or bigger signs or?
Combination of everything, George, ones that have vanished for whatever reason. Um, we've also had some that need to be replaced. I know Dustin's starting to go through some of those, um, and seeing that we want to get them properly signed. And, uh, so there's just a combination, and I don't think he's done this for, Janet, you recall the last time we ordered a bunch of signs by chance?
Well, he's waited. He's waited on the ones that you said vanished.
Yeah.
Um, those are the same ones that vanish every year. But he, his in, his inventory, he did, I think in September, and he's just held off before he puts them back up, but, um, the ones that vanish, he ordered extras because they'll probably vanish again as soon as the weather gets nice. It's unfortunate, but it's the same ones that keep going missing. But.
This, I don't remember him ordering for, I don't know, three or four years.
He, he ordered last year, but not in this quantity. So you're, you're right, I think that a lot of them have, uh, some of them have faded. But yeah, this is, that's, this is a lot of signs, George. And they aren't getting any cheaper.
I, I, I've noticed some fading, um, in particular, the ones on Cedar Street, no parking, which we need one more across from Finnegan, next to Finnegan Park.
And I, I think what he's doing is kind of waiting until all that construction gets done. Because I know he put up one and it got damaged, um, by one of the, um, construction people. So I think he's waiting until all that gets done and then he'll go in there and, and put them up correctly. But yeah, our signs have taken a really bad hit in the last three or four months.
Any other questions from anyone? If not, could you have a roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Okay, um, we do not need a resolution to excuse any of the co, come out council members. This time is public comment. Uh, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on its agenda may do so. And individuals are allowed a total of three minutes to speak. No takers, so city manager report?
Thank you, George. Um, just real quick, we did issue a code red for snow removal, meaning we need all the citizens of, of Shatter that have parked vehicles on any of the snow routes down in this area to make sure that they're getting moved, um, and, uh, so we can get the snow properly taken care of. Uh, they'll come in, scrape everything back. We're also letting the business owners that are down in these areas too for the snow removal, please get them out in the snow windows so we can get it all taken care of at one time as well as where that goes. With the severe cold and more snow coming, um, just asking the, everybody, all the neighbors, all the citizens, please look out for your neighbors, help out what you can do for all these things and just be patient, take your time on the roads. It's gonna be slick and school got clo, closed too as well. So, uh, that'd give us a little more time to try to get some ice melt, some sand around too. But if you find some kind of issues, um, just please let us know, give us a call down here at City Hall, leave us a message. We will get the message out to the guys, but they will be starting at three thirty, four o'clock in the morning, starting to work on these things. So be patient with them as they get through this and, and going through there. And that's all I have, George, thank you.
Tom, is that code red already sent or going to be sent out?
Code red was sent out.
I didn't get it.
You didn't get it?
I didn't. Three thirty, okay.
That you'll get.
Oh, so it is targeted.
Yes, it is targeted for the area.
Citywide.
No, but the other thing too, I want to let you guys know is that we are starting to update like our website and it is on a banner that is code red for out there. Uh, KCSR has it actually out there too on the radio that's being announced. So, um, but yes, code red is specific to the areas that's necessary for it, so. Good question, thank you.
Okay, um, council closing comments, start with Mark.
Stay warm.
Yeah, stay warm for sure. I, I just wanted to recognize and, uh, praise the, uh, participants in the middle school spelling bee last week. There were three kids from each, each of the four grades in the middle school. Um, and it, it, uh, had some attendance in the middle school library, but just not, uh, not something that you might see advertised or, or have a lot of attention to, but I, I thought it was a pretty cool thing. Um, and they did have pretty heated competition. Some of those words were pretty surprising and I, I think even as an adult, uh, might, might struggle to spell them. My, uh, my own daughter was in that and she, uh, memorized chlorofluorocarbon. And she was not asked that word, but she was, she was ready for it. Uh, and, uh, congratulations to, uh, Emily Roberts, who was the, the champion of that spelling bee. And that's all I have.
Just stay safe and stay warm over the next couple of days and that's about all I've got.
Just like to remind people, I mentioned it before, look at your sidewalks. If they need some work, take advantage of this program. It'd be really overwhelming if we had too many applications to approve. It would be a good deal. I want to congratulate, uh, Dennis and Kathy Brown from KCSR on their re, upcoming award that's going to be sometime later in the year. They, they leaked the nu, news to themselves. And put it on their, on the radio, so, uh, it was nice to see. And, yeah, everyone's, um, obviously we need to stay warm, but stay safe also.
I would just like to, uh, wish the, uh, Shatter High Wrestling Team good luck this weekend. Like we have the men's, we have two, two contestants going down, yeah. Good luck to them and then remind people that there's a Shattered musical on the March fourteenth and fifteenth in a matinee on the sixteenth at two. That's all I had.
Okay, I make a motion during this meeting.
Second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane, to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Okay.
Alex, if you need to sign, any of these council members will be able to do that for you.
The agenda meeting, you always put out the stuff on Friday since Tom will be going.
Your dad, your dad's, uh.
Yeah.